We're all set. It is seven o'clock. We're meeting September 7, 2021, 7:00 PM, regular Board of Education meeting. We are going to start with the Bachelor's Legion, not the Legion, with Mrs. Kennedy.
I present the agents to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on our nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for
Can everybody hear with the mask on? Yes, okay. Next up is roll call.
Rebecca Shandless? Here. Crystal Weaver?
Absent with notice possibly will be running late.
Mark Holcomb?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Deborah Odd?
Here.
Beth Skye is absent with notice. Gloria Thompson?
Here.
You're four.
Next up, public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at its meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretaries before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this form to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comments from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' concerns and questions. One more thing. In light of what occurred August 9, we're not going to tolerate, we're not going to deviate from our rules. I insist that all comments be generic, not focused on one person. And with that, who is the first one up, please?
Tammy Belmont.
I hate public speaking. I don't like to get up in front of crowds. But this matter is very important to me. I'm not here to bash anybody or the district, a district that I love and I grew up in. The hardest choice I had to make was pulling my kids from Madison. My deciding factor was the latchkey program and the summer camp. My kids have been going there pretty much since it started. I'm a single parent, I'm a self-pay parent. I have a zero balance. For the last two years, I've had several issues. They range. When I signed up for latchkey summer program this year, the notice said children have to be here by 10:00 AM. I paid my $50 registration fee, had my kids sign up to go. Then all of a sudden it changed to 9:00 AM during summer. Now, I can understand that if there was a field trip or something going on where the kids have to be there to be a belief, but that's not what was going on. I had a morning where I said, I'm going to be a few minutes after 9:00. I'm sorry, we can't take your child or children after 9:00 AM. I did voice my concerns, I worked midnights, I did contact Mr. Dillahad, he did call me that one time. I have a very odd schedule. I'm sleeping usually at 4:00 in the afternoon, I'm usually sleeping right now, I work at 11:00 tonight. Contacted Mr. Robinson, we played phone tag back and forth. Then I found out that they were making school-aged children take naps at summer camp. Now, for the price that we're paying for this, which is astronomical, it is very high, and they just raised their prices again. The latchkey program right now is at $225 for mornings and afternoons. The district where I'm going to now is $75 for mornings and afternoons. As a single parent, that's almost my entire paycheck going just to latchkey. To find out again that my children are being made to take a nap or at least lay down during summer, that's not what summer camp is supposed to be about. And then to be told that I can't bring my children after 9:00 AM. When I signed my registration, it was 10:00 AM. I get home from work at 7:30 in the morning, I wake my kids up, I feed them breakfast, I spend a little bit of time with them, I bring them to summer camp. 9:00 is not going, we're not going to school, it's summer camp. Again, I understand that, you know, you have to have a schedule, but there were no field trips or anything else, and it wasn't a daily basis, but you're telling me I cannot bring my children in after 9:00 AM during summer camp? Again, on the forms that were filled out, it said 10:00 AM, and then it got changed. So that's, you know, one big thing there. Maybe I would have made my decision not to pay my $50 registration fee if I'd have thought I had to have my kids there by 9:00 AM. And the biggest thing is I've had a few emails, I really didn't make it a big deal, but I'd liked my $50 registration fee back. My kids did not utilize summer camp because I was never able to collaborate with everybody that needed to be talked to and, you know, get my schedules made, it's summer, whatever, but I paid my $50 registration fee and was not able to utilize the program because I was told I'm not allowed to. And then I wouldn't anyways finding out that they were making school-aged children take naps.
Dear Board of Destruction, being a Madison alumni, I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, with ugly being the most recent embarrassment caused by you people sitting up there in these seats along with that unqualified superintendent you claim to be highly official.
Stop. We just said, you're not such an embarrassment. We are not doing the personal.
Dear Superintendent, I don't know how you can go your day.
Okay. We need her to leave.
And this is why my kids go to Lampier, along with many others. You want parents quiet? It's about to be lights out because none of you guys are going to be in here.
This is why you guys go to Lampier.
That is good, isn't it?
You all need a side too. Do the kids a favor.
I'm Tom Smith, can you hear me? I wanted to mention another cause of school staff turnover besides pay and funding in the district. We've just come out of a unique year due to COVID-19. If you read the news, you find that nearly every industry and profession is experiencing a large amount of employee turnover. Workers are reassessing their careers and looking for change and new experiences. Many workers like working from home, they don't want to go back to an onsite environment. Some don't want to go back to commuting. Not to mention the health risk from potential COVID exposure in an indoor environment. I'm sure this has affected many school districts. I'd be surprised if there wasn't a lot of turnover. Once again, I've heard skateboarding without considering all the facts bears driving employee After the last school board meeting, a lady told me about the additional millage cost for Lampier School District. I looked it up. The big difference is an annual 7.25 supplemental millage. If you have a $2,000 tax bill in Madison District, your bill would be over $2,500 in Lampier. It's quite an increase for a lot of taxpayers. The problem for me is maybe it's better having someone else take it over. I voted for the operating millage renewal on August 3, but I wonder if taxpayers will still want to vote for these bonds in this district. But we probably should be careful what we ask for. Oh, congratulations to the varsity football team on their 2-0 start.
Good evening. So I had a speech written, but apparently I'm going to have to scrap that. But I do, I would like to make a comment about all the bans and the letters going out, which, you know, they're not justified. I mean, Ms. Robin, I just spoke on her child's 501, or 504 plan that wasn't being followed and personal threats that she received, and then she gets a ban, or Amy Lewis, a community member, gets a ban because somebody threatens her with a gun, with no repercussions. I mean, I don't get it. So, and then you guys sent my wife a warning to my house, like, you can't come here because, was there something wrong with her speech? Because I do have an attorney, I retain her, and I'm not going to be intimidated by your guys' attorneys. I mean, that's the bottom line. So if you want to trade letters and see some assists, I'm good with that. So I personally, and then when I walk in, you know, Mr. Dillahad asked me, had I received a letter? I don't get it. What did I say to deserve a letter? If you do send it, that's okay, I'll send, I'll write back to you. So that's, I guess, have a good evening.
August 28, I emailed the Board about a few different things, one being a law in physical contact by certain someone. I asked if there were guidelines in place to prevent this type of behavior with low response. I would like to remind this Board of Education that Board Policy 3362 states pursuant to Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972, sexual harassment is defined as unwanted physical and/or sexual contact. I never gave you permission to enter my personal space and wrap your arms around me, Superintendent.
I, I, stop.
But would I go filing a formal complaint?
Where is accountability? Thank you.
I need to speak with you.
Harleen. Jamie, Jamie Theo will take your formal, sorry, not your draft.
Next up is Superintendent Report, Mr. Dillahad.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Who's talking?
I am. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
For what?
To discuss that all initiation of legal action against a community member, family member, staff, or any form of litigation or legal resources used on behalf of MTPS come across the Board of Education, or the table of the Board of Education. Since these letters do speak for us, we should have our voices heard and borne more so before.
You deserve support. Your not motion failed. Thank you. We'll move on to Superintendent, Mr. Dillahad.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. I just want to discuss a event that we have on September 11, from noon to 4:00 PM. There is a class reunion for anyone who graduated from Madison District Public Schools, with the newest member class being classes 71, so classes 71 and older. You're invited to a class reunion at Madison High School. It's open to anyone that graduated, and Jim Joseph would like to formally invite the Board, he does have a table reserved for us on Saturday. He just needs to know who's interested. Again, it's from noon to 4:00 PM, and they have a presentation, a 15-minute presentation. So if anyone's interested, or anyone that graduated, class of 71 or older, you're welcome to join the class reunion. Our back-to-school, we're in Week 2 of back-to-school. Week 1 was a success. We had the opportunity to watch parents walk their students into their classrooms again, and that was a nice experience to witness, getting back to some sort of normal. Sports is back in the full swing of things. Currently, we have middle school football, middle school volleyball, high school volleyball, high school football. Regarding COVID cases, we had a meeting today with Oakland County Health Department. The cases slightly ticked higher for age group 5 to 18 years of age. Oakland County anticipated this as schools got back into the swing of things. We've had no compliance issues with the mask mandate. Everyone's adapting and conforming and have not had issues. Again, this is for in-school activities and sessions for students. They are not addressing sports at this time and masking of sports. They're waiting on guidance from Michigan High School Athletic Association. And I want to invite anyone that's interested in the Narcon training, that's September 14. We put a link on our website, on our social media, and that's from 7:00 to 8:30. That's open to the public September 14. And that is all I have. Ms. Holder.
What was the time again on Saturday?
The Narcon training from 7:00 to 8:30 PM.
Thank you.
On September 14.
Madam President.
Yes, Trustee Holcomb. What would you like to add, Mr.?
We got a form committee to investigate what they call PALS, police activities, and athletics, working with the police department. I talked to Lori, he's off to work, he'd be willing to work with us. So that's one of them. And the second one, we got like a new competition with the kids to, at one time, we had a kid not veteran that you're talking about, he'd like to see motivational speeches in hallways. Well, I'd like our students to have competition, who writes the best motivational speech, and we go and get the top three, and we, we live in machines, I can have machines in a room, and we can find the plaques, put the plaques on the wall, top three. That's in middle school and high school.
Still running. And with that, do we have support? Ms. Thompson, support?
Yeah, I was going to say, is it just one motion or is it two? I went for the GALS.
That's fine. We do three, A1, and three, A2. We do first have to vote. We have a mic maker, we have support. Mrs. Kennedy, can we have roll call vote, please?
Rebecca Shandless? Yes. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up is the incomplete motion of August 8, 2021, Special Board of Education meeting guardians for technicals that was not addressed due to early adjournment.
Chair.
Ms. Shandless.
Is there any way we can table this until our next meeting, when the entire Board of Education can be present?
Sure. Do we need a second on the table? Good, looks like we do. Do we have a second on the table?
I'll second.
All right. Can I ask, during discussion, does anybody else have any questions? I would just like some clarity, please. I listened to it four different times, and it wasn't succinct to me what it was you were asking for. So if we could get clarity, so we know what we're voting on very specifically, I would appreciate that. You'll have time to do that, okay?
Okay.
Any other discussion? And with that, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
I was prepared.
This is to table.
This is to table.
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we are back up to A1. Form a committee, how, within the police department?
I want to mention, we have laws here.
Okay. And first, we need to make the motion to commit to this, and then we can set it up with discussion and then vote on it. So all we did the first time was add it to the agenda, so we need to make the motion this time.
I'll make the motion to, to make the committee, the form committee to work with Chief Haines, three people, Chief Haines.
And does there support? No support. Trustee, out, support. Any other questions? Discussion? Mark, did you want to talk about this?
Well, it's, I guess, I watched, my wife and I watched TV about the end of the day, he's off to the rest of the country, and he didn't want to get in trouble, so we offered him this, this thing here, and get him into it. And it does real good, it teaches him about athletics, sports, academics. Like I said, the doctor, Chief Haines, he's more than happy to work with us on it. And I think they could set up a nonprofit, where they could do it, police department could do it, and we can do it, make greater more money if we need to do it. I think that would be really well, let them run, because we have to do it here at our
For everybody who can't see the handout, the mission statement says, "To promote positive relationships between law enforcement and youth through community-based educational programs and recreational opportunities." You said three board members and Chief Haines would be?
Yeah, Chief Haines would be more, he's around 400.
All right, so once it passes, if it passes, then we need, I'm assuming you're going to volunteer and then to the board?
Well, yeah, I will, if, if I need to, if not, I don't want to conflict with the state, you know?
This won't be a conflict interest. Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Chair, next question.
Go ahead, trustee, chair, please.
So in the packet, it says $100 to send two kids to a summer camp. Is this just a summer camp, or is it a year-round program? And then what does it require to initiate this program? So that it could, like, how do we find the kids, or how does that work? How does?
That's why we want to set up a committee with Chief Haines, let him set it all up.
So we're just going to vote on children, but we don't have a plan?
Yeah.
Okay. My understanding, as importantly as I'm wrong, is we are going to set up a committee to investigate.
Yes.
Whether or not we do this.
Right. Although there's just for the committee, correct?
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Oh, sorry, yes. I thought you said Christine.
No, Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I apologize. Okay, next up, A2, competition motivational speech with Wilkinson and Madison. I know, we might have all the building principals here, so we definitely would want to know whether, whether or not they would be okay with less kindness. I don't know how, getting thumbs up, okay. And Mr. Holcomb, the floor is yours again. Is there anything?
Yeah.
Can you guess here?
I guess I got it right there.
Okay, so you need to make the motion.
All right, I make the motion to, to competition with the kids for regular motivational
And is there support?
No support.
Trustee, out, support. Okay. And with that, any other questions? I have one. Did, did, you not do this before?
No, I've done it before, but I've never, never.
Never can give tuition?
Right.
Okay, so we're going to try to make this happen this year. It's the beginning of the school year, so we have a better shot at it, right?
Correct.
You would be willing to work with Mr. Dillahad and or the building principals?
Yes.
To help us set this up? Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, can we vote, please?
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting on August 2, 2021, and the Special Board of Education meeting on August 9, 2021, from start to when it was adjourned.
Madam President.
Trustee, out.
I'd like to make the motion to set the board, as, as read.
And we have support.
I'll second.
Trustee Thompson, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Good. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is, you had received the Oakland County School Board Association proposed amendment to the OCBA bylaws, an administrative comment. Each year, the OCSCBA Resolutions and Bylaws Committee convenes for two purposes, to draft resolutions and to review our bylaws. The resolutions are based on legislative priorities that were recommended by the Government Relations Committee and approved by the OCSCBA Board of Directors. Resolutions that are approved by at least 19 member school districts shall be the official position of the association, is interpreted and pursued by its Board of Directors. RMB reviews the bylaws annually and recommends amendments when appropriate to ensure the smooth operation of the association. In accordance with their bylaws, the 2021 resolution and proposed amendments to our bylaws are now provided for voting by our member school district's Board of Education. The Board of Education of each member school district has one vote on the resolutions and one vote on the proposed amendments. We are providing separate ballots for these votes. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the OCSCBA resolution and bylaws as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
Chair, I have the motion.
Trustee Chamberlain, lead the motion.
Holcomb.
Trustee Holcomb, support? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, it is the selection of the MASB 2021 delegate and alternate. Administrative comments are as follows. MASBS 2021 Delegate Assembly will begin Thursday, November 11 at 6:00 p.m. At the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel in Grand Rapids, delegates selected by Boards of Ed across the state will decide MASBS position on a wide variety of issues affecting education. Blow is a link to use to certify the official voting delegates and alternates who will represent your Board of Education. All delegates and alternates must be school board members. Only delegates and alternates named by your Board may offer motions and vote on issues. However, all school board members may speak on the issues and participate in the debate. Your 2021, 2022 MAS B dues must be paid in order for a district to participate in the delegate assembly. It is asking, do we want our Board of Ed to choose an MAS B 2021 delegate and alternate? It is, just so everyone knows, it is not a requirement that we send somebody. It is, I did some digging, just FYI, hotel was about $200 a night, and the registration, I think, was seven or eight hundred dollars now, I forgot. It's the paper I wrote down on this here. What is the wish of the Board? Do we want to send a delegate or not?
Chair?
Trustee Chamberlain?
I think we should send a delegate. I think that we should take out the opportunity to find out what districts around us are doing. It's a difficult year, putting back after virtual, a lot of things are changing with rules and laws every day, and I think having the most information to make the best decisions possible is something that we should do, and so, to do, do the diligence.
Is there support?
Is this a matter of the district voting?
If we vote on it, well.
Chair, I just want to say that it's less than one meeting of attorney bills for us to go, meet with districts around us to see what they're doing, to get resources, to network, and to possibly get opportunities, and think that we don't necessarily know ourselves by meeting more experienced board members or people who do similar situations and are successful.
I do know this is one week out of the year, they'll still have the meetings during the year. I am now hearing support. Okay, motion fails, we will be sending no district pay representatives. Next up. Approval of the Title IX Third Party Investigator. Mr. Dulahat, did you want to handle this, or do you want me to read it?
I can read it.
Or Mr. Theil?
I don't know if he's back yet.
Okay. Don't Theil, so, oh, I didn't realize that. Okay. Recommendation for the Allen Law Group as the independent third-party investigator for the Title IX complaint and the Board of Ed, education, a cap on the cost of the services were between $8,000 and $10,000. The Allen Law Group charges $225 an hour. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Allen Law Group as the third-party investigator for the Title IX complaint as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
Does anyone mind that's, that's the support we, uh?
Yeah, first we need a motion so we can discuss it.
I'll make the motion, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Trustee Thompson is the second, trustee Holcomb is the maker? I know Jamie's not here, is there anything that you might want to get, Mr. Dulahat, or just?
So I would recommend that you, um...
Okay. I know it was investigated and that this was the, this was the recommendation, so that's all that I can say on that. If there are any other questions?
Chair, I have some questions.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Chamberlain.
I just wanted to know, why is there a need for a third-party investigator? If the third-party investigator is paid by MTPS, what will they do if we have a thumb to, if the complaints are accurate? What will happen if they are accurate? Do, does the MTPS as a whole feel that we made the right decisions? And then why in the message to the Board of Education was it necessary to put, who filed the Title IX complaint, which immediately puts a bias in the minds of board members who made a slight that person? And two employees have to assist and oversee this, will they receive a statement? And how will they monitor and oversee everything to make sure that we don't, or we aren't currently or haven't been in violation?
And unfortunately, Mr. Theil is not here.
So there is no statement for the investigators?
Should we table this until Mr. Theil can be here and give the information?
My understanding is this is time-sensitive and we have to vote on this tonight.
But if we don't have all the information, how can we vote?
When it's legal and it's time-sensitive, you have to make a decision.
When it's legal, it's most pertinent that we have all the information to make an accurate vote.
Okay, any other discussion?
There we go.
Chair?
Yes, this is not, this is not something that our board, that we already retained. I, of the understanding that a third party is the best way to handle this, we don't want anybody saying that it was.
Biased.
Biased, thank you, in any way.
Chair, can Mr. Dulahat at least explain why the person who made the complaint's name was in the email as if it was vital information when all these other questions I have about that information was not considered vital, as if to make a bias to board members who made a slight that person?
Can I ask what email you're talking about?
The emails we've received about everything regarding to this.
So you're entitled to know as a Board of Education, and you were copying on the original complaint, the entire board was copying on the original complaint.
Mr. Dulahat? Well, you're not entitled to a lot of information, let's not pretend like we are.
Wait, wait, stop.
Yes, ma'am, you have a seat.
Stop. It is suggested that we go to a third party so we don't show any bias, we get a unsolicited, we're not accused of doing anything underhanded, malicious, or anything else, so.
But you can't even tell me why I recommend it.
We're calling the question, Eric Kennedy, he's taking.
It was recommended because there are statements made that led, you know, Jamie to believe that he needed legal opinion, so I don't want to speak for him.
He's not here, we have to vote on this tonight. Eric Kennedy, please take the roll call vote.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss? No. Motion passes.
Next, approval of the Chromebook purchases is next. Next up. Do you want me to take this, Mr. Dulahat?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Approval to purchase 250 Chromebooks with associated cards, carts, management council licenses, and warranties using Acer II CARES Act funding is being brought before the Board of Education for approval. The Chromebooks will be purchased from the pre-bidet REMC website with an estimated cost per Chromebook of $205 to $230 for the 14-inch screens plus the cost of the items listed above. These Chromebooks will be distributed as follows. 125 Chromebooks for the high school, 125 Chromebooks for Madison Elementary. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the purchase of 250 pre-bidet Chromebooks using Acer II CARES Act funding. I need a maker and support, please.
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Thompson makes the motion, is there support? Trustee Ott makes support, is there any discussion?
Chair?
Trustee Chamberlain?
I'm also asking questions for trustees that couldn't be here. How many Chromebooks have we purchased over the last year and a half, two years? Are those Chromebooks being utilized? How many more are needed to have a one-to-one ratio for students? Why didn't we do this previously versus the repeated installments that we approved? Why don't students already have that when we have hundreds just sitting around? And how many more is going to take?
So last year, we did not have enough, and there is a chip shortage which still is in place now, and we just received our Esters II complete funding. And there's a need for testing, for data assessment, that request just, was just made by principals, and so as the requests come in, we put those before the Board. I believe middle school is one-on-one, elementary needs Chromebooks, middle school's not one-on-one. Are you one-on-one, Mr. Wood?
Yes, we are.
You're one-on-one, okay.
Yes, we are.
My son told me that's a cart they control into his room that they share with another cart or another classroom.
So the carts hold over 30, and they're distributed through the homerooms or the advisory classes, and there's only 17 per class? So yes, because we have a shortage of carts and not Chromebooks, teachers next to each other in the same content area will go ahead and keep a same cart, but each student gets a Chromebook at the beginning of the day or the structural day, they return it and advisory have to keep during the meeting.
Are some students given iPads because we don't have Chromebooks?
No, all students have Chromebooks.
Okay.
But as you know, technology gets outdated, so the 150 that Troy had gifted us last year were older Chromebooks, and so we're transitioning. Our field goal is to have one-on-one Chromebooks in six through 12, and then iPads are one-on-one, but again, those are getting older, they're approaching five years of age, and some of the apps are, are requiring a lot more memory. So as we get more resources, we're trying to put them to good use.
I think part of that question was how many do we have and how many do we need to get one-to-one?
Well, not count, I, I don't have the exact numbers, I don't want to just give you a number, and I don't want to count the ones that were gifted to us because those are old, so I could get you a count of new ones, but I believe.
Did you hear that, trustee Chamberlain?
I did.
Any other questions, trustee Chamberlain?
None.
Thank you. And hearing no other questions, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, school membership dues are required for Madison High School and Wilkinson Band participation in the amount of $375 each, a total of $750 to be paid to the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association. Dues have to have a deadline to be received by the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association by September 20, 2021, and need to be approved during this Board of Education meeting to meet this document. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve school membership dues payable to the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association for Madison High and Wilkinson Band participation is outlined above. Do we have a maker and support?
Madam President, roll the motion.
Trustee Ott?
Holcomb.
Trustee Holcomb? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to approval of virtual learning academy agreement. To accommodate our families that are requesting virtual learning, Mr. Dulahat is requesting to use Oakland Schools Virtual Learning Academy Consortium, the LAC, in light of the state of Michigan's effort to have Michigan's. In light of the state of Michigan's effort to have Michigan School Districts perform services through various collaborative efforts and Oakland Schools' desire to provide and make available various virtual educational programming to its constituent school districts in the most efficient and financially sound manner. Oakland Schools will utilize appropriate curriculum and support materials to create the online educational program. Entitled the Virtual Learning Academy Consortium High School Program. The program from here on out. Being offered hereon there, Oakland Schools reserves the right to change the name of the program at a later date. The program is virtual, core curriculum-based. Where eligible students complete rigorous online courses that meet all state of Michigan content expectations and common core state standards for the grades being offered. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the Virtual Learning Academy Consortium Agreement. I need a maker and support, please. Trustee Thompson? Do we have support? Trustee Ott? Any discussion?
Chair.
Trustee Shandless?
Um, I have a question. What is the number of districts in Oakland County that utilize this program? Um, and then Trustee Beaver asked me to question what was the purpose of renewing Edmentum if that was not a good source of virtual education for the students? And also the 1:40 ratio, that was one thing Madison has above surrounding districts, that we do have personal courses. So what did this take away from something we are offering?
I don't have the number on exact districts, but I know several have partnerships with BLEC. Edmentum also offers corrective action like Exact Path. So Edmentum is, is a combination of multiple platforms. So we still are utilizing Reading Eggs, which is Edmentum. We're also using Exact Path, which is also Exmen, uh, Edmentum, and Courseware, which is also Edmentum. But the pupil accounting has not been changed like it was last year. So we have to offer the virtual, um, learning for the 40 students that have opted to select virtual. So we're not taking away, but we're adding additional resources to those families that are in need.
Okay, that sounds awesome. Just a couple of questions though. It says students may have in-person attendance required for certain instances, including but not limited to course examinations, statewide assessments, status conferences, special lectures, etc. Um, if that happens, will we be responsible for transportation on the route? Would it be the same as at a mandatory school day? Would we be responsible for that?
So testing will occur in our district. Uh, special education services is in our district. Um, the assessments are all done in-house with us. Now, the parent-teacher conferences and all that, I assume they would be virtual since the whole platform is geared towards the families that are trying to avoid being out with COVID. So yes, we do have to offer transportation if, if it is required.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, one more.
Go ahead, Trustee Shandless.
For the students that have an IEP or 504 plan, um, it's the responsibility of a school district. The school district shall be responsible for identifying any such students who may be eligible for any special education or religious services in or remediation. Are we giving assessments at the beginning of the school year or like routine checkups with them so that we know what their current, current status is and what they might need that we can advise so that they get it?
So IEPs are reviewed yearly. Uh, we had a, um, a Zoom conference today with the parents and we explained to them that special education is our requirement. They will be working with Mr. Andra. They have an IEP in place that gets reviewed yearly. And if a parent needs to adjust, they could convene an earlier, uh, IEP review.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, um, we'll call vote, please.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, individual employee contracts. Um, Deron Hood, transportation. Rihanna Carter, transportation. Lisa Turner, school new nurse. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the individual employee contracts as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Thompson? Trustee Holcomb? Any discussion? With that, we'll go to the new employees. So we'll take a roll call vote. I'm assuming it'll pass.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, approval of the Madison Teachers Association contract. Mr. O'Doula, seeking approval for the attached MEA contract for the 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24 school years. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached MEA contract. Do we have support? Maker and support? Trustee Ott?
No.
Trustee Holcomb? Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Trustee Thompson, go ahead.
I'm reading the contract. I'm just curious, Angel, if what percentage were their raises about? I know like Detroit was at 3%. I'm just curious.
I, I think it varied where, where they were, so we didn't do an average.
What was the variable?
Dr. Hill said some fell at three, some fell at more.
What sort of variable was there?
Where they were on the salary scale. I, I think it was, I think it was more than 3%, though. I don't, I don't recall the average of, of, of 3%. I think it was higher than that. We're, we're still one of the lowest, but we got a little bit placed together. So it's a recommendation. The MEA has already ratified it from their membership.
I guess I'll just add, being a, a teacher's wife and raising a family on a teacher's salary. Um, I know this is pretty generous. It wasn't any kind of numbers I ever saw coming up in my husband's paycheck, so, you know. Anybody who says you are under or not appreciated, you know. Don't let them say that to you. With that, we'll, we'll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up is Gleaners. Gleaners School Food Mobile Program is hosted by Madison District Public Schools. It is recommended the Board of Education continue the partnership with Gleaners, Gleaners for the 21, 22 school year. Um, we need a maker and support, please.
Chair, I'll make it.
Trustee Shandless is the maker. Trustee Holcomb, the support. Any questions? I know I had one, and I haven't seen it lately, but it used to be quite a problem. The pallets and, and empty, um, boxes and food being, I would get multiple phone calls. That gallons of milk at the baseball field and things that people delivering or handing out can't possibly control. Um, but is there a way to handle that? Have we got it under control? Only because we obviously don't want food wasted and, um, Trustee Shandless, she would know better than anybody if that's been handled.
Um, maintenance is really good at cleaning it up. We have had in the past, um, people pick up a, a box of goo goo to go down to Mel's, and when they leave, they, for a million reasons aside, they no longer want it. And they have left it, you know, a profit deficit by the football field or the softball field. But I know that maintenance is really aware of that, and they're doing their absolute best to make sure that it's all picked up as fast as possible.
Yeah, it's just unfair that they need to follow up on this side of the, because it's, yeah. Food that's going to people who might need it. Um, okay, any other questions? With that, we need a roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up is the approval of the Amarch Development Corp Memorandum of Understanding. Approval of the memorandum of understanding between Amarch Development Corporation, New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, and Madison District Public Schools. We currently utilize the New Bethel parking lot in Pontiac as a bus stop for elementary, middle, and high school students. Funding is from August to June for a total of $17,000. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the Amarch Development Corp Memorandum of Understanding for the 21, 22 school year. We need a maker and support, please.
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Trustee Scott? Oh, Ott, I'm sorry. My brain went back too. And we need support, please.
I'll support.
Trustee Thompson? Any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Trustee Thompson, go ahead.
Angel, I tried to look this up, but I didn't have the old records. What did he pay last year?
I think I sent you guys the report, that paid us 86.50. And 86.50 is broken down into two semesters. Uh, the previous year, it was 18, 19, it was 75.50 each semester. And we have approximately 115 students.
And my next question is, um, rainy and extremely cold, snowy days, can't get their inside?
Yes. That, that's part of the.
That's part of the agreement?
Agreement, and, um, they are also taking our kids after school. Uh, and they're doing a tutoring program that is in charge to us. They partnered up with the city of, um, Honey. And during the whole pandemic, they still allow us to deliver food to their parking lot. They help us with it.
Chair. Chair.
Trustee Shandless, go ahead.
Thank you. Is there any way we could do a contract with them to lock them into a price for a few years? So it doesn't go up like a couple thousand every year or two? I'm not saying that what the new economy seems like. Is there any way, like, we've been doing that with a lot of contracts in this issue, so is there any way we can do that where we lock them in for a few years?
I mean, it's possible, but that does not give you the flexibility at all. Uh, you'd be locked in and whatever happens. And if, they have not pressed us for, they've been pretty accommodating. Um, they've not pressed us for increases in, if actually are looking to partner up and help in like what you're doing. And they've been pretty, I actually attended one of their, um, church serpents when they were talking about Madison District and the services that we do provide to students that select to, uh, attend our district. I could, I could explore that, but then you're locked in. And if anything happens, you're, you're kind of.
I understand, but we've been using that for a few years. We seem to like their services. The students seem to like their services, so it should have died first, you know?
I, I could, I, I'll be happy to talk to them to see if they'll do a discount for the multiple year. See if it's a win for both parties.
Can I just say, um, and I was not part of that original negotiation, but obviously we never know how many kids were, were going to God or whatever, so I understand.
So we moved from 40, yeah, so we had about 45 the previous year. And we did send out the mailers and we increased those numbers to 115, you know. But yeah, you never know.
And any other questions? Hearing none, uh, we'll call vote, please.
Rebecca Shandless?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up is personnel report, but I don't want to.
He is the manager of the state with his, um, with his, uh.
Yeah, so, and I know we had already done three hires.
Yes, those were the individual, but he has to hold the court of resignations and teacher hires.
Okay. So they will hold them to look, are they maybe, or will you have a special?
No, we need to, no, we need to.
Oh, okay, you have the list. Okay, sorry. Here, I can do it. Thank you.
Oh, great.
Trust, I got it, thank you. Uh, I missed it somehow. Okay, new hires, Christina Hunt, technology teacher, Madison Elementary. Alex Andrea Smiley, social studies teacher, Madison High. Jill Remos, oh goodness, Os, Is, Oskie. Tell her I apologize. When I, when I meet her in person, I will shake her hand and apologize personally, Madison High School. Amanda Kocinski, third grade teacher, Madison Elementary, a book gardener, social worker, Madison High. Sonia Bassin, special ed teacher, Madison High. Madison Potte, volleyball coach, Madison High. Marcus Green, teacher, football coach, Madison High. Lisa Turner, small nearest district wide. Denisea Langgask, social worker. Wilkinson Middle School, early childhood. Catherine Brittenberry, math teacher, Wilkinson Middle School. Juliet Helgamo, first grade teacher, Madison Elementary. Following her resignation, Megan Haas, teacher, Madison Elementary. Rachel, four grade, Madison Elementary. Alma Travaskis, part-time secretary in administrative office. Lynette Bolanichuk, teacher, Madison High School. Toida Williams, bus driver, trans. Toida Williams, bus driver, transportation. Katia Bailey Sanders, bus driver, transportation. Paige Moore, social worker, Wilkinson and Early Childhood Center. Andrea Dixon, Madison Elementary. Shannon Osterlin, teacher, early childhood center. And eliminations, no eliminations. Reassignment. Alicia Hemingway, diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator, District 1. Okay, none and none, that's the list. So we need we need a maker and support. I apologize. Thompson? Support. And trustee Ott? Any discussion?
Chair, I have another question.
Trustee Chandler, go ahead.
For the nine that picked nine, did we do exit interviews on all nine of them? Was there any information that the Board of Education might find valuable to hear without any specifics about their names? And were any of the nine avoidable or potentially able to save? Was there anything we could have done?
Jamie did a surveys on those that were willing to participate. Some of them had resigned and then decided to come back. We had a kindergarten teacher that had left and then we sent it their resignation. We always make an effort and attempt to retain our staff, but some have indicated that they're closer to home. And I don't know any further than that, other than I know they came in as exit cervix.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chandler? Yes. Motion passes.
Next up. SLSA list update, would you happen to have that?
He doesn't have anything for the board tonight.
Okay. And after that, check register approval. The expenditures for the month of August 2021, details are attached for review. Accounts payable, $651,000, 2.7589 cents. Payable, $259,62 even. Wire transfers, $494,940.68. For a total of $1,405,278.57. I need a maker and support, please. I'll make the motion. Trustee Thompson makes the motion.
Roll the vote.
Trustee Holcomb supports. Any discussion? Madam Chair, go ahead.
I just have a question. Angel, I noticed that Detroit Boiler checked on our boilers and some of the high schools failed and then were repaired. And it says that they were retested and they passed. But we don't have that for Wilkinson or Madison Elementary where they were fixed and then retested.
I'm not sure Wilkinson uses boilers like a high school does.
It says lock-in bar boilers?
I would have to, I would have to ask that anyway, and I can give you an answer to that. But Jamie, he's the one that works to directly with facilities.
And my other question is, every time we have a boiler touched in this district, it's a state mandate that the state inspector come out and look at that work. Are we doing that on a regular basis? Because we've been doing a lot of
I think they're thorough, Detroit Boilers, Refusal Company. And I'll do a couple check with Jamie to see that we're doing those inspections.
Chair?
And go ahead, trustee Chandler.
I am just concerned about the Clark Hill billing. How do we have over 18,000 on this? But in the most recent invoices, it's over 19,000 with $14,566 in basic things past due. How are we 14,000 plus past due on a legal certification?
I don't think we're past due. We made them whole last time.
Yeah.
We made them whole last time, so it depends on what invoice you're looking at. What does the check register read as a payment to Clark Hill?
It's the one you just sent us today.
Yes.
I sent you all the ones that we had, including things that we already had paid.
So they've been made whole?
They've been made whole.
Because I also looked at that and noticed that we were at the bottom of the invoice. It said past due balance, past due balance on all of this.
Yeah, it said past due balance, $14,566 in basic.
What's the date on that?
It's the email you sent. But even if it was, whether the email was today, yesterday, last week, at some point, there was 14,000
The date's covered from February to June.
Yeah. So we've, from February to June, but we made them whole. Do you remember a few board meetings ago where we had
Right.
close to 20,000 or something like that because it was past due?
Yeah, and you said that there was a business office discrepancy or like those were going to one place or stuff, they're going somewhere else, and that whole thing was streamlined?
Yes.
And that would have to
No, so the issue was when I explained it is that I was getting the detailed, the detailed invoices. Those are only privileged to the board and myself. So we couldn't give those to Joanne to do because of the C employment act. So then that's when we, you know, streamlined it and had Joanne contact oh, Trune and Clark Hill to get the non-detailed versions of the invoice. And she gets them and she's been inputting them in. So that has been consistent now since we discussed that last.
So the $18,089 makes them whole again?
I don't know which one you're looking at. Is that what the check register reads?
This is on the check register.
18,000.
$18,089.
I would anticipate them dead after being whole. Now, they're doing, not only are they doing board council, but they're also doing the closing and the charter agreement with Keith Grace at the same time. Trune is doing this purchasing piece of it. And then Clark Hill is doing the charter agreements, the updating, and ensuring that that process is
Yeah, I'm not questioning if they're billing for time. They actually work, I assume that they are. I'm questioning why are we ever getting to the point that for $14,566 past due for attorneys?
So if, if we have, for example, right now, the month of August, we don't get their invoice until the end. So we rack up depending on what we have to do here corresponding with them. And depending on when the bill comes, if it comes after, for example, if any bills come from legal after today, we have to wait till October. And so then we'd have two months of racked up bills. We attempted to do the preapproval, but you guys voted it down. So now we have to wait. And depending on when the checks are cut. So when I asked Joanne, she said the checks are in the safe. They're waiting to be released, but I can't release them.
So they mark us as past due because they haven't even sent one? Or?
It's our fault because we could cut the checks, but we cannot send the checks until the board approves the checks. So they sit in the safe. So the last board meeting we had was, what, August 3rd? And we had with invoices. So if we get the bill on August 4th, we could cut the checks. We can't release the checks. So the checks sit in the safe until today.
But if we know we have a meeting at the first month, they different take with holidays, first Tuesday of each month, why haven't we attempted to remedy this? So they're not having clients that are past due or not being past due? That they bill as like, you know, the last week of each month of them, you can't
Well, we can't tell them how to do their billing practices. We can't, we can't direct them to change their whole billing practices to accommodate us.
But when I asked about that one before, you did say you could look into it. And it's fine if now you can't. Um, but I also haven't seen a Clark Hill bill for a couple of months.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Make a solution. Here, we can put them on the essentials list.
And trustee Chandler, did you hear Dr. Help? That was her response, she said she agreed.
Yes, if I recall, that was brought up at a meeting prior. And at that time, the majority of the boards did not feel that they should be on essentials because we had had a long discussion about it, which I'm sure is on video. And at that time, we felt that we needed to know what legal was doing and what services we need for the board. But I mean, you can vote whatever you want.
It appears, yeah, your concern is well pointed out. And so the rectification for that was to add them to our essentials list.
So instead of fixing a system where we're meeting 14,000 past due on a bill, we're just gonna put it into a pile that we don't have to worry about?
No, no, what I am saying is absolutely the opposite. And more to the point you have brought up, let's not let these sit. It still, I thought, and you're right, it had been addressed before. And I thought that our remedy was working. But at least in this particular instance, it did not. So the remedy that we have today as we sit here is to amend the agenda, add the attorneys as essential, and pass it, and then their checks won't sit in the vault. Those are our choices.
Can I add an addendum to that? That we indeed get detailed information? Because we still don't get detailed. All we get is a date and a name. We don't know what it is.
They do send details. They absolutely document.
When we request invoices, we don't get that.
So can I add, excuse me for one second? If it is the wish of this board to amend the agenda, then let's make that motion. We still need to approve our check register or not approve it. And then we can move on and handle that next order of business if that's what we want to do. So can we handle the check register first, please? Any other questions? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chandler?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now would be the point if someone wants to amend the agenda.
I would like to amend the agenda that we put our law firms on the essentials list with the added addendum that we, as board members, when we requesting invoices, we get the detail. Not just the date, the time, and the amount.
Amend the agenda to add this. So we need support to add it, and then we still have to make the motion and vote on it.
I'll support the motion.
Excuse me. Trustee Ott is in support. So that will then become SLSA 1. So the first thing that we will do is amend the agenda, add just what this vote is for. No discussion?
Chair?
I just want to say we have two board members who were part of that discussion before that are not here. They are not able to voice their opinions. And neither are just not here because they're, you know, they're a date or something fun. They're both here for serious, not here for important reasons. So I think they were making a big decision without two people who had strong opinions about this at our previous conversation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is to amend the agenda. Mrs. Kennedy, go ahead, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chandler?
None.
She passes.
Now, we move on to the motion. And this is where you can add anything that you want included on the check register when you see it.
Okay. I don't need it on the check register. I need it when I request the invoices. I want to add an addendum that we, as board members, should be allowed to see the detail. Not just the date. They, I never know whether they're discussing. All I get is a date, a name, and an amount.
And we need support for this?
Addendum?
Yes. Support the addendum. And any other discussion?
Is there a reason why you don't make details now? Is it because
I don't know.
So Joanne is only entitled to see the invoice, the details come to me. So when Joanne, when she requested the invoices, she sent you what she had. So now that I know that you want the details, so anytime you make a request or any trustee, we'll just send you everything. Knowing that It's supposed to say, yes, for the board member. Yes, confidential.
Oh, yes.
Correct.
Do you have to add something that I
Any other discussion?
So can we ask, is add them to the essentials bill?
Yes.
And send detailed invoice as one request?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no other questions or comments. The roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chandler? None. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, SLSA man's update, Dr. Hill.
The only update tonight is that we now have access to SLSA 2. Now, the state now, just last week, made it so that school districts can now apply for SLSA 2 funding. So we are currently compiling the list to give to our consultant in terms of what we would like to spend SLSA 2 on. That's the only update. The consolidated title funding, we're not able to apply for yet at this time for SLSA 3. That's one update.
Committee reports. GRC.
The GRC meeting was on September 1st. We had a guest speaker, Jeanne O'Guay, she's from the 27th district. She was giving us legislative updates, the homeschool work permits, specialized funding bills, mandatory vaccine, the mask update, the FB 618 modified, the rate reduction for school bond publication approval. And it's a really long email with all the links that we got to pronounce the things to go to the meeting. So I consented to anybody that's interested. But it was a very inspirational session.
That's it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I know there was a lot of information, so I wanted to make sure. Next up might be you again, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Okay, so the DEI committee met and we are working on a program to bring students from all backgrounds together, to work together, to try to make their school better. And it was brought from a tribe in Arizona where they had six, seven, eight graders work together to do a program. And they actually stopped bullying complaints by like 98%. And they were able to get kids that said that they would never talk to this kid, but now they're like best friends. It was really, it was amazing so that bullying and children feeling like they're left out, like there would end. like there would end in schools and bridge the gap of everything because you might not know what someone's going through. And just because someone lives differently than us doesn't make them better or worse. You know, it just makes them good and interesting. And so they're trialing the program in Grand Rapids. And they're gonna be bringing it down to the county soon. And they're gonna try to locally. And hopefully it goes well and hopefully something that all schools, you know, across the state, across the country adapt. But right now, it's just trying and we just don't care about it.
Okay, thank you. All parks and rock?
I don't have any.
All righty, back to trustee Chambles. More comments?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out today. Everybody that's on Facebook or YouTube watching. Thank you for staying informed and attending these meetings. I would ask to mention that trustee Bieber has asked for three times since April for a full curriculum and program list so that we can know and prioritize what we need versus approving programs and stuff like that without knowing like where could everything be missing. So if we could get that forward soon, that would be great. Thank you to all the staff that has made me back to school. The hardest back to school day for a lot of parents and a lot of students, so much better. I came into three buildings on the first day of school, and I saw staff smiling and laughing and high-fiving and joking and playing and helping with lockers and helping with backpacks and explaining things to kids. And, you know, parents were in there trying to help, and staff was just engaging so much. It was amazing. I saw principals outside the building, meeting and greeting everybody, cheering everybody on to have an amazing day. And at the end of the day, those same kinds of old heads smiled across their face from ear to ear. And at no point, you know, sending my kids back from person to person, maybe a year and a half, at no point was I worried for their safety, at no point was I concerned that they weren't gonna get a quality education. Because Madison might have its problems, but one thing I will always say is that I do not know any staff in this district who don't deserve everything they're getting so much more. And I want to say from my five, kids run out in three different buildings. I have theories from my daughter being almost 18. You know, what world is she gonna walk out to? Is she gonna make some parents? All the way down to my fifth grader, who I worry shouldn't be bullied? Is she gonna be alone? Will she eat lunch by herself? You know, kids are harsh, you know, in the world. And the staff has made me feel like it's okay. I don't cry when I see my daughter on the bus. And I can tell you, you came from Virgile in 2018, and that was the reason we left Virgile. So to come to Madison with smaller schools, amazing staff, and to see what I saw on the first day back after COVID, the staff at Madison District is amazing. And honestly, Mr. Vila, I will say, I appreciate and love the two principals that you have added to this district. And I can tell you, they are phenomenal, and they are a holy key to even why I was okay on the first day of school, worried about my kids with COVID and masks and hand hygiene and all the other nonsense. So thank you.
Next up, Mr. Holcomb.
I want to thank people who've been out too. And I'd like to say congratulations to a few of our peers right now. Doing a good job. Keep it up.
His direction also is better voting.
And Mr. Vila, I would like you to post on the website about looking for somebody named this competition after. A motivational person.
The Pals or the motivational saint?
The motivational saint. I would like people to put in their two cents worth as far as somebody that throughout the city that's been a motivational person and on the board.
He want that. He want that to come out from each building, so they, all the kids.
Parents, all the other parents.
Okay.
Every building, that's one name for all of them.
Okay.
Now looking forward to working with principal on this. I guess it's a lot. Thanks for coming, my friend.
Ms. Thompson, you're up.
Okay, to make this short, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'd like to reiterate everything Mark just said about the program. I think both programs are gonna be with one, with one. The Pals and the writing. The writing can hurt. That's writing. So we want your support. That's both teachers. Thank you.
Next up.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out with us tonight. And I'm hoping for a great school year. I know I have a great niece who started today, and I believe she had an awesome time at GSRV. I'm looking forward to working with the new staff and students. And I know with the pandemic, it's really hard. But I don't see, everybody here had masks on tonight at the meeting. Fantastic. I'm hoping everyone educates themselves on our bond and gets some infrastructure done. And we can just keep right on the page that we're going. Again, thanks for coming out.
And that leaves me. I want to say welcome to all the returning and the new staff. I truly do appreciate everybody hanging in or coming to join us. I just want to touch a little bit on the last meeting. It seems like people misunderstand. Even have we not accepted the resignation of anybody? They are not unresigned. It's really a formality. The paperwork's already been done. Just so everybody knows, everything we saw, we really could vote yes or no. But resignations aren't just that, and they're done already. So if we vote no, it doesn't mean they're still employees. That's not the way it works. The other thing, Jamie Bellmack, I'm sure you'll talk to her. There's something in the contract that you can work out with her. I'm sure that you will. I had an idea that I'd shared with Mr. Vila, and I know he's been very busy. I think we need to thank and commend the kids that have agreed to stay here with our staff, with our parents. When I was in high school, all those many years ago, we provided drivers out to the kids who stayed on the honor roll. It was if they could show us that they were responsible, we would do their drivers out, and they still had to pay for their own taxes. I don't know if we can do it. I would like to look into it. I think the kids in the high school that have stuck with us that are willing to show that they're responsible to be behind the wheel, I would at least like to look into that. I think we also need to do something, honestly, for the elementary and the junior high kids. Driving is a big deal for the high school. That's a no-brainer if we can do it. I won't promise, but I think it's something that we need to... Thank you is heartfelt, but I don't think people appreciate our thank yous maybe as being as genuine as they really are. It's all of us up here, not one or two that are concerned about what's going on. Last but not least, I guess my other thing for this year is, and we need help with the new staff, especially at high school scholarships. For as many years as I can remember, we had a couple of outside organizations that went back for kids to write an essay and qualify for scholarships. We can't make them do that. But I'm hoping that we can somehow light a fire. I don't care if they're going to OCC or Michigan State or U of M. It's all, you know, it's all free money. If they sit down and with a little bit of help and direction, they just put pen to paper or nowadays, fingers to keep their words. But I guess those are my thoughts for this year. Thank you, everybody. And with that, I think we need to make a motion to make sure.
Make a motion.
Mr. Holcomb, and I will support it. Trustee Ott? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. In turn, E. Ford.
Thank you.